All right, I'm going to call the July 13th meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to order. I would like to welcome everyone in attendance. Thank you for being here with us. Moving on to announcements. Any announcements? I'm going to read a little press release here. Amanda Fuller graduates from University of North Carolina Chapel Hill's CGCIO Certification Program. Chapel Hill, North Carolina, June 22nd, 2021. Amanda Fuller, Assistant Information Technology Director for Macon County, has successfully graduated from the 2020-2021 Certified Government Chief Information Officers Program at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill School of Government. Congratulations, Amanda.
Thank you.
So I was reading Amanda is one of the 45 local government, state agency, community college, and K-12 education IT leaders in the state of North Carolina who successfully completed this course this year. Yeah, great job.
Thank you.
Way to pursue yourself. Super. Awesome.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, yeah. Good opportunity. I want to hear a little bit more about it. That's great. Any other announcements?
Mr. Chairman, I would mention that American Legion will be holding a flag disposal ceremony Saturday morning at 8:30 at their hall. So if anybody would like to attend, if you've never been to one of these presentations, I'm sure many of us have, but it's really a nice presentation. It'll be 8:30 Saturday morning.
Anything else? All right. We'll all rise. We'll observe a moment of silence. I'm going to ask Commissioner Shields the latest on the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you know what works to bring that? All right, I'm going to open up our public comment period. First on the list is Jim Gaston. Welcome, Jim. Come on up.
All right, I don't want to start this meeting off on a negative note or anything, but my name is Jim Gaston. I live in Cowee Community. Very thankful to be a resident of Macon County. But in case you aren't aware, there's been a recent controversy at the local library involving a gay pride display during June in the children's section, and I'm pretty sure this board approves the funding for the library. I'm not going to try to persuade all of you the reasons why this type of celebration of confusion is wrong and unacceptable, but if you truly know your constituents throughout Macon County, I'm confident you already know that the vast majority would be against glorifying anal sex and gender confusion to our children and grandchildren. We all love the library and appreciate its overall service to the community, but openly celebrating something so devastating to children is not in the best interest of Macon County, even though the tiny minority that would support gay pride tends to be the most obnoxiously vocal. I'm confident each of you are familiar with the frog in warm water or the camel's nose in the tin analogies, but the residents of Macon County do not want our children to grow up in a place that turns into California or New York. Those people have been fleeing the crazy liberal states for sanctuaries like Macon County. I encourage this board to keep Macon County free of all the moral decay and cultural calamity that's attacking our entire country. Thanks.
Rebecca Tipton. Welcome, Rebecca.
I also wanted to take a moment just to address the display of the library because I heard from friends about it. Sorry, I'm really tall. Maybe that'll work. I heard from some friends about it, so I went and checked it out, and there were 15 books out. And while I wouldn't object to all of them being in the library, I think that's okay as a resource for people that might need that support. I do object to it being shown in a public area where any child could waltz over there and pick up a book and maybe initiate awkwardly a conversation with a parent that parents are not prepared to have with their children. I think that's something that parents have the sole discretion over whether they address those topics with their children. These touch on really sensitive issues of sexuality, gender, politics, philosophy, religion. They just, they span so many complicated, controversial, different topics that I would like to see those things on the shelf in most cases, but not put out and celebrated and championed in quite that way, if that makes sense to you. I have an eight-year-old daughter, and I'm not comfortable with the idea of her going over there and kicking down a book about a San Francisco activist named Harvey Milk and asking, "Who is this guy? Oh, he created this beautiful flag." Well, he also was a pederast, which means an older man who seeks out sexual relationships with underage men, if you call them men. His youngest, I guess, partner was a 16-year-old boy, and that actually constituted statutory rape in the state of California. So A, I think they need to be very discerning. I don't know if this is appropriate to you guys, but it's publicly funded. What kind of books are on our shelves? And secondly, what we champion to our children? So that is my main concern. And also transgenderism has become really popular and pushed into culture since 2015 with Bruce or Caitlyn Jenner. And it's, I find the uncritical acceptance and championing of it very problematic as a parent. That's, again, a very complicated discussion I want to have with my child. I'm not comfortable with her going to the library and picking up a book about, you know, a transgender child and their politics and being forced on her. So also, I think the transgender agenda has been very pushed really uncritically, and a lot of the darker aspects of it masked in the culture, and it's glossed over, and it's made to look very pretty, and it's made to look very easy for people to change their genders, but it really is not. And I find that personally problematic. I respect other people's right to live as they choose, but also I'm against medical malpractice of helping children transform their gender through hormones and surgeries. And one book that I found on the library shelf, and I actually looked at the books and I checked them out to examine them, was about a young, he was born a boy, but he wanted to become a girl, and his parents were supportive of that. And so the name of the child is now Jazz Jennings. And I wanted to see how far, you know, the child with the parents' support took their transgender feelings. And it turns out that the child has had four really massive risky surgeries to their body as well as puberty blockers and hormone enhancement and different things. And I don't think we know what the long-term effects of that are on our children. And I don't think it's right to just push that out in the public eye and say, "We put a stamp of approval on this as a public library, and we like this." Does that make sense? So anyway, that's my point. Thank you very much.
Steve Connell. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you. I'm also here about the library issue and the display of Pride Month things in the children's section of the library. So I would reiterate and echo the points that Mr. Gaston and Ms. Tipton made, but also would like to just ask that you consider when you do the funding for the library, and I really don't know how all that works, but I know you can't tell them exactly how to spend the money, but you could tell them what not to spend the money on. This might just be something that stays on the shelf, but not, I have grandchildren here and visiting grandchildren that come, and so it would be, I think it would be best to leave these sorts of things on the library for adults to look at and to make the decisions on them and not in open display for everyone to, for young children to see. But thank you. Thank you for it.
Evan Lampkin. Welcome, Evan.
On a totally different note, a while ago, I went to the town council meeting, and I spoke to the board about getting a skate park in Franklin, and the mayor and the rest of the people there were on board with the idea. And over the past month, we have started donations. We set up a thing before the parade, Tim here, and people came by and donated money. And the done construction people that are building the hospital by Bojangles said they would give up their time and money and effort to build our skate park if we got a plan for them, but they're leaving before February, so we're trying to get as much as we can done before then so that they can do what they do. And we'd really appreciate it if you guys could help financially and just trying to get things moving. Thank you.
Evan, before you leave, you might want to ask a question?
Yes.
Has the town of Franklin, have they come up with a location?
We have not. That's another thing. We are thinking where the dog park is. There's lands there. There's trees there, so that would need to be...
I think we have.
Actually, at the town board meeting last week, it all runs together, so sorry. They actually voted for the Whitmire property. No, I lied.
J.C.
J.C. Park. They're looking at there because HCA's, the contractors that are working on that project, reviewed Dog Park, reviewed Whitmire, and their best option that they are comfortable with and the funding and the time that they are allotted to be is the Dog Park or Whitmire Park. Sorry.
The J.C.
J.C. Park, whatever it's called today.
I missed that meeting. I'm sorry.
They did have.
Yeah. Thank you.
Evan, if you'll keep your interest up and keep this board informed, just like you had the courage to come here tonight, we'll do our best.
Thank you so much. Have a good one.
Tim Shaw. Welcome, Tom.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time. I'm a parent of two teenage skateboarders, and a lot of times after school, they'll call me up and say, "Dad, we're going to skate town." And as a parent, I appreciate the phone call, but also as a parent, I cringe when I hear that term "skate town" because these kids need a safe, legal, free place to skate. And they've worked hard. Like I said, they had donations, and they've had raffles, and they've made almost $2,000 so far just starting off. They've got the town on board, and like she mentioned, the J.C. Park is on. Done Construction has checked it out. They like it. It's an easy fix for them. I appreciate Done Construction coming in. I mean, how often do you have a multimillion-dollar corporation of contractors come in and say, "We want to build your community a skate park"? I mean, we have to grasp that opportunity. This park is for all of Macon County, not just for Franklin. And we've come here, me and Evan and everybody else, has come to ask for your help. And as some of the other people have mentioned, they care about the children of Macon County, and so this is the time we can all step up and help the kids of Macon County. And we're asking you folks maybe perhaps for a monetary donation, maybe some help with services, materials you might have, maybe signs, trash cans, light holes, some way that you guys as the county can come together, because this is, like I said, not just for the town, it's for the whole county. Skateboarding is a sport. It's proven that it's physically good for your physical sport and for mental. It teaches bravery. It teaches tenacity, and it teaches finesse. And right now, it is becoming an Olympic sport. As we speak, there's a group of young men and women on the United States team going to Japan to represent the United States, and these kids right here could train for the Olympics. Maybe in four years, we'll see them on TV, but they need a safe, free, and legal place to practice, to train. And perhaps we will see them. And when we see their name there, it will say, "Hometown Franklin, North Carolina." And how proud would we be? How proud would Macon County be? They were known as the gem capital of the world, but when they cross that Macon County line, they see that sign that says "Home of Olympian," that will make everybody proud. And tonight, folks, you can change their future, and you can change the future of Macon County. So thank you for your consideration.
What is, Adam, what's the status of the skate park at Methodist Church? What is that? What's the ringworms there, Adam?
So that skate park is open once a day sometimes, or once a week, sorry, once a week sometimes. And it's a concrete pad, and it has two metal ramps. So after you're there for like three hours, there's really not much else to do once you've gone down all the ramps a dozen times and once you've gone up the ramps a dozen times and once you've done all your flat ground things that you need to do. And it's, like, that's really it. There's not much to do there until...
I didn't know what the status was. Thank you, Adam.
What I might add is it's great for beginners, but it's not much of a challenge for somebody that has a little bit more experience. And our goal is to build a skate park for all levels of...
I'm here in support of the...
So I came here to speak to you about something else from a professional capacity.
Your daughter's tall, isn't she?
From a professional capacity, but I have since been compelled to step out of professional capacity and speak to you as a resident of Macon County and a mother of an eight-year-old boy as well in Macon County regarding a library display that I did not even know it was there. And I'm sad that I didn't know it was there because I would have loved to have gone to seen it and taken my child to see it and to help celebrate Pride Month and to help celebrate the people who want to be included and to feel included and welcomed and loved. And unlike some of the other people who have spoken to you tonight, I have absolutely no fear for any of my children, my three children, to be subjected to that type of book on a shelf or do I fear having that type of conversation with my children at any point as a parent? My child's grandmother is part of the LGBTQ+ community, and it is by queer, like, by coincidence that he is here with me tonight. I probably would have been speaking about something completely different and he would not have been here with me tonight, but because that is our family, and we love her and we support her, for him to sit here and to listen to somebody to say that cannot be on display in a public facility because they do not agree with it is 100% against and opposite of what a public facility is, and no one should be excluded at all. And that's exactly what is being asked for. To give one month for a book that somebody can relate to, to be on a shelf and to see on display, and to have one month where they can feel included and loved and accepted by somewhere in this county, don't go there that month if you don't like it. But that could be the only month that that person gets to be there and to get to see that and get to feel normal. And you're absolutely right in saying that the majority of people in Macon County wouldn't agree with that and wouldn't have been happy about that, and that is all of the more reason why it should have been there for those few people that have nowhere else to go. The amount of suicide rate in teens who are part of the LGBTQ+ community because they have nowhere else to turn is astonishing in our country that we have been experiencing that right here in Macon County, that people have taken their own lives because of the persecution and the bullying that they've endured because of that. So I am so proud that our library has stood up to do something for those people, to provide them a safe place to turn. And I hate that I missed it because I would have loved to have taken all three of my children there to read those books, to read those stories, and have an extra opportunity to have that conversation. Removing those books from the shelves of our library or from display is no different than the burning of the books that our country looks on and is embarrassed about now that happened so many times in our history. So I want to thank the library, who I don't think are even here to defend themselves, and to thank the people who did that because it might not be my story to tell or to celebrate, but I am so grateful that those people had that month and those individuals had that community for even if a short period of time to feel welcomed and loved and appreciated. So thank you to the library.
All right. I'll end the public comment period and moving on to additions to the agenda. Any additions?
Very comfortable, and I apologize, I didn't get Mike's notice. I'm trying to switch using my campaign email when I was at Bay Lake getting the deadline.
No problem.
Real briefly, I went to the Manahala Library Meeting, or Manahala Community Meeting last night. Let's put that on the gen if you don't mind, and decide tonight if we're going to, if the library is going to participate in expansion or the development of Manahala. And secondly, for some time, I'll...
Hang on one second. Let's put that as 11G.
11G.
11G, yeah. Okay.
And secondly, I'd like to have a brief discussion, introduction on the Macon County Commissioners' Electoral Districts.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's put that as 1H. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if we could please remove item number 11D under due business. We're in conversation with Southwestern Community College regarding our previous decisions to renovate the National Guard Armory and that being part of the burn building project, but we're still waiting on you to receive some information from the state. So that'll be better handled than all, Mr. Shipp.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Board?
No, don't have anything.
Okay. We did have a, no, there won't be an addition. Let's move on from additions. Go to adjustments to an approval of the agenda under adjustments. I know we have a very large consent agenda. Is anyone, I mean, we can look at it later, but if anyone has anything they'd like removed now, go ahead and put it on the agenda. If not, we'll talk about it later, which we can do also. Any other changes? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Hickman. Second by Commissioner Shields. All in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Reports and presentations of Medicaid Transformation. Shelley Forman, Community Relations Regional Director for VIA Health. Welcome, Shelley.
Welcome. I'm short, so I think that... Now, let me see here. They said I could use a PowerPoint, and Tammy was trying to tell me. I'm not sure. Oh, there it is. Let me click, I think.
You got it.
Okay, is it on your screen? Oh, okay. Can I do this so you can hear me so I can read? Okay. So first, let me just say thank you for allowing me to attend tonight. As always, I have to say thank you to Commissioner Beal for all the work that he does for VIA Health, and not just for VIA Health. He really does a lot of work for across the state in supporting behavioral health issues and supporting the programs and everything we need to better support people with mental health, substance use, and developmental disabilities. So tonight, I wanted to just talk with you a little bit about Medicaid transformation, if I can figure out how to get to the next slide. Is there anyone, Mike, do you know how? I'm not sure with... Okay. I don't know what I just did. So when you talk about Medicaid transformation and how it will change for VIA Health, as you know, VIA Health is a public agency or a local government entity that manages Medicaid and state funding for people with mental health, substance use, and developmental disabilities. And our world will be changing soon as transformation has started July 1st. And so right now, what VIA Health manages is three different populations. So again, that's people who have one of those disabilities who have Medicaid. We also manage all of the state funding coming from the General Assembly and from the counties for people who have those disorders. And we also manage what's called the Innovations Waiver, and that's a special Medicaid waiver for people with developmental disabilities. So how did we get to Medicaid transformation? As you all may remember, several years ago, the North Carolina General Assembly and working with the Department of Health and Human Services decided to change the way Medicaid was managed. Our state was very different than many states because most states start with physical health and really begin on the physical health side and then move to doing managed care for the smaller section of people with behavioral health issues. So in North Carolina, the LME MCOs were created first, and we began managing Medicaid for the state in 2016. 2012 through 2016 was when that whole process started. And so the state in doing, moving to the primary healthcare world, decided to create a plan where there would be an RFA and insurance companies could bid to become the entity that would manage Medicaid in North Carolina. I'm sure you've heard about a lot of this through your DSS director and through other agencies here. So that process began. Legislation was created, and due to a couple of delays with the pandemic and with the budget allocation, that was part of the appropriations that was continued with the budget negotiations, we are delayed in getting started. So the goals of Medicaid transformation are to really create costability in the state of North Carolina for Medicaid. Instead of being a fee for service, the state wanted to know how much it was going to pay for Medicaid services across the state. So in order to do that, they will pay these prepaid health plans per member per month, where they get a set amount of money to be able to manage the Medicaid services. One of the differences, though, is in the state of North Carolina, the goals really shifted and began to look at an integrated system of care. So basically, both VIA Health, as we become a tailored plan, with fingers crossed, we will manage whole-person care. So all of the health plans that will be delivering Medicaid will deliver whole-person care, will be responsible for healthcare of the people we serve, will be responsible for their pharmacy needs, will be responsible for all their service needs. So we will be managing the whole package. So the folks, though, who will be transitioning to one of these insurance companies, they'll also be responsible for their primary healthcare and services that I would consider mild to moderate behavioral health issues. So in North Carolina, there will be three types of plans. The standard plans, the tailored plans, which is VIA Health, and the tribal option. So any enrolled member will be able to choose the tribe, the tribal option for Medicaid, and they'll be able to manage all of the services through the tribe instead of one of these health plans. In North Carolina, you have four health plans, and you can see those, AmeriHealth, Caritas, Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Healthcare, and WellCare. So on July 1st, all of the people that were enrolled in the standard plans began receiving their Medicaid services through one of those four health plans. So just to give you an idea of what that means, in Macon County, there are a little over 8,000 people who are eligible for Medicaid currently. Of those, about 7,400 will be going to one of the standard plans, and only 791 people will stay with VIA Health. And so each of these health plans will really be looking at the whole range of services. So just to give you a little bit of an idea of the people that VIA Health will manage with that much smaller population, it's really people who have serious and persistent mental illness, people who have more significant mental health issues, people who need assistance with housing, employment because of the significance of their mental health issues, children with complex needs. So those people who are really at the higher end. In the standard plans, they will be managing not only the healthcare through their primary or tertiary care physicians, they'll also be working with them for their mental health, substance use needs that would be like outpatient services, like someone who would need to go in for therapy or group sessions, someone who has a lower level of need. So it's two different populations with VIA managing the more acute and more serious, and with the standard plans managing those people who have lesser need. So that's a pretty big number when you look at, out of, you know, over 7,000 people, that's only keeping about 10% of those. So as of July 1st, people in your community who are eligible for Medicaid have been able to either choose one of the plans that they go with. There have been lots of mailings that have gone out, letters, postcards, all types of information. They were able to look at those four health plans and get assistance in choosing. Unfortunately, many people did not make a choice, but they were what is called auto-enrolled. So many people, if they did not make a choice, they were either assigned to health plan based on their primary care physician that was documented or through an algorithm that the state made up to distribute evenly across. So one of the challenges with this, I think especially has been hard during the pandemic and people really not maybe hearing as much about this process as usual and the low number of people that actually self-selected versus just being auto-enrolled, is how is transition of care going to happen? Because these people currently are receiving their... Because these people currently are receiving their Medicaid services through VIA Health and they are part of our health plan. So to let you know what's happening for people in your community, there have been many meetings. Our care managers meet Monday through Thursday, one day for each health plan, to do a warm transfer of cases. So if you have a behavioral health issue and you might have had a higher level of need in the past, our care managers are talking to these health plans and transitioning care to you. We're also working with the state to make sure that people who do get the more high level of services, the higher level of services are, have not gotten those letters and that there's a process for changing your registration. If you mistakenly signed up for a standard plan and one of those four health plans, but you really need to stay with VIA, our providers can help them transition. They can call us. We can help them transition and get them the information. So this whole process is really being monitored around transition, transitions of care for people in the community. So I had hoped to come to you tonight. I know I've reported on this multiple times and of course, Commissioner Beal has told you, of course, VIA Health applied to become a Taylor Plan. This was through a RFA process as well. We were supposed to know about two weeks ago, I think. Yeah, about two weeks ago. And there's been a delay at the state level for informing which of the MCOs that are currently existence will be able to take over this increased function of managing the full spectrum of health and behavioral health services. There can be no more than seven, but it's between, I think, five and seven that they're allowed to choose at this point. We feel like we have a great record in our performance statistics and everything that we've done at VIA and that we'll be successful. Our Taylor Plan was, you can see, it was 2,600 pages, 18 hard copies. It was a, it was a pretty big production. Just letting the timelines just to show you some of the issues, you know, that we are having to deal with to really be able to contract with those primary care providers, contract with pharmacists, that type of thing. So I just wanted to let you know this is happening. You might hear about it in the community as you're interfacing with different agencies and organizations. There will be probably people in their community who are still confused, not sure what's happening. There was a lot of competition to sign up for the standard plans. All the standard plans were offering incentives like free cell phone data, you know, that type of thing, you know, funding to go to school. So hopefully, people will be in the correct plan to begin with, but they will have opportunities to change their plan if it doesn't meet their needs. So that's just a little bit about Medicaid transformation. I know I just said a lot of information, but it has now gone live and maybe at the next commissioner meeting, you can report that we were awarded the Taylor Plan. And that would be then a year towards implementation. We would have a year from that announcement date as we prepare to do that.
Shelley, if I could just add more. The reason that this is so important, you can, all this stuff is, you know, it's really important, but here's what's really important, is that it is a competition and we have a lot of huge insurance companies out there. They look at this Medicaid dollars, which is billions of dollars, even for our rural area. And if we, if we not successful, what we'll have is no more local input. There'll be no local input. I mean, pick up the phone if you have somebody in your family member, at least they have somebody they can call. Now, you put a large insurance company and you can forget all that. The personal touches of local rural communities will be in danger. So that's one of the reasons this is so important, and I believe we'll know more after Thursday.
And you're exactly right about that. I did include several other pieces of information in your packet that I'm not going to review tonight. We can report more on the budget information. But just to put in perspective of our budget, 80% is Medicaid, almost 80%, like 79 points. And then the remaining is a combination of, you know, state, General Assembly, allocated funds, county funds, grants, that type of thing. So there really is a lot of money in it. And in four years, if we're awarded, four years after we go live, assuming we're awarded, the state will then, according to this legislation, open up and do another RFA for more competition for years. Because now we have really a two-tiered system where we're really keeping the people with serious and persistent mental illness and those with no insurance. So just be reminded, we will continue to support the funding and the services and the programs for people with no insurance.
Just for instance, tomorrow, we'll have a conference call for county commissioners from our 23-county engagement area, and most of them will be on that call. And so it keeps the local boards and the people you represent in every county up to date, especially in the far west. So it's very important. Shelley does a great job with this and keeping everybody informed. It is complicated, at least. You ask any person who's went through the Medicaid process and it's, you know, this don't help, that's a pity, but it's still local, we can have local involvement, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now in your packet, in that presentation, there is a number for anyone to call. If you get a call from one of your constituents having questions, that enrollment broken number is the number they can call for help. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. We have no old business, new business. Item 11A, Clay Macon Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, 2021 update. Emergency Management Director, Mr. Warren Kaye. Welcome, Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I'm asking for renewed approval of our multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Hazard mitigation plan identifies the hazards that you have in your community and whether that be natural, like earthquakes or tornadoes, or man-made, and it guides you in the direction of development strategies so that in the event one of those things occurs, it's not such an issue for your community and the lessened effects of those. We're required to have one of these in place by the federal government in order to be eligible to receive federal disaster funding. Our plan is 10 years old, so this will be the second renewal that we're doing of this plan. North Carolina likes them to be multi-jurisdictional because typically, these things don't stop the county lines and that way they don't have 101 different plans. So therefore, we regrouped them with Clay County. So this plan actually covers Macon County, Clay County, and the towns of Franklin Highlands and Hazel. North Carolina actually hires a contractor. They develop the plan and actually helps us go through the renewal process every five years in order to get through federal approval. We did receive the letter back from the federal government that says that our plan is approved based upon our final local approval. It's about 380 some odd pages, so obviously, I can't go over the whole plan, but as a synopsis, I have it on my phone if you want me to go in detail. But as a synopsis, a couple of things we looked at from the time we renewed before to the time we're renewed now. There's more emphasis on wildfires. There's a lot of data in there on wildfires since we had this stuff happen in 2016. There's more emphasis on things like cyber attacks, things that really weren't as much of an issue five years ago as there were now. There's a lot of really good historical data in that plan. There's a link to the plan on our webpage. So if you're interested in a lot of historical stuff that's happened in Macon County over the years, there's a lot of good stuff in there to go back and look at that. We also list potential projects, things that we think could be improved, and we take those out every five years, depending on what happened. And just as an example, when we initially did this plan, we put a tub grinder in. If we ever received mitigation funding from the federal government, maybe we could buy a tub grinder for the landfill to get rid of storm debris. Well, since then, we've realized that it's much more cost-effective to hire somebody to come in and do that for you so I don't have to pay the maintenance and upkeep on that thing. So we deleted that project, but we added one in for the storage building over at Coles Saja Park that floods. Every time it floods, we have to worry about stones in that building moving it out. So we wrote that project in. If we ever got funded, then perhaps we could put that money toward that. And if we list those projects, it's supposed to give us a leg up on folks if that funding becomes available. I can honestly tell you that I've applied probably a half a dozen times since I've been here and have received zero funding, but we keep putting them in there anyway. So basically, tonight, I'm just here to ask for renewed approval of that plan and Mr. Becker has the resolution that requires Mr. Tate to signature sometime in the next couple of days.
We get a motion to approve, Senator. Motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Hickman, all in favor. Signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Request for permission to apply for broadband grant. Economic Development Director, Mr. Tommy Jenkins. Welcome, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Emerson Commission. The broadband, no, excuse me, broadband committee has an opportunity to apply for a broadband grant, broadband grant, excuse me, through the National Telecommunications and Infrastructure Administration. This is a national program that's got $288 million available and funding is a quick turnaround. It requires a public-private partnership with, a local government entity has to make the application and has to choose a private partner, an internet service provider to actually partner with. The broadband committee met, and since we have a relationship with Bosom West and a project already underway there, we thought that Bosom West would be the logical provider to do with that, to go with. The grants from anywhere from $5 million to $30 million, so it won't be a lot of awards, but it's, you know, if you don't, if you don't apply, you don't get it. So we think it's important to apply. Basically, it covers, it covers underserved areas.
We definitely have that one.
Yeah, we got that one. Also, they look at the most cost-effective way of providing broadband, and they must provide service with a down-low speed of at least 100 Mbps and a low speed of at least 20s. So that's pretty significant compared to what some folks are giving. The application is due August 17th. When I first, when we first started talking about this, I thought I was going to have to come to you for some consultant funding because we have to hire a consultant for that grant. But Friday afternoon, I applied for a leverage grant that they don't pay off the trust, and this afternoon, they approved it, so we don't have to pay.
Good job.
I didn't tell the county manager, I didn't have time.
I was just trying to, you gotta ask for money.
Yeah.
Motive to approve the request, Mr. Chairman.
We'll go into discussion.
Motion by Commissioner Beal, second by Commissioner Hickman. Go ahead. Discussion's already begun.
Okay. If we are fortunate and we are awarded this grant and we've already funded the auto arm, what was that, how much we put in?
580.
580. Can that offset that or is this just for?
Well, you do not have to have a match amount, but the administration looks favorably upon a match amount. So we think we can consider that 580 or at least 290 of that as a match amount to help us get over the high of the application process.
And that'll be reflected in the grant, I mean, in the application?
Yeah, we're still, we're still have that 290 committed. This will just be an addition.
But if we're lucky and we could get one of the multimillions.
Yeah. Blow that wide open.
I mean, we could take that format.
Oh, yeah.
If it was successful, if that one pans out and just.
Yeah, then you could motor on from there. Also, just a point of information, Region A is applying for an ARC grant for $100,000 on behalf of the county for broadband expansion. So that application will go in this month.
Any further questions?
I have a question about the money from Dogwood.
Right.
Is that going to be awarded to Macon County?
No, they will pay the consultant directly.
Correctly, okay. I didn't know if we needed a budget amendment. Okay, great. So they'll pay the, they'll hire the consultant?
That's correct. They'll hire him and contract with him.
Okay. So the county won't have any involvement in contracting or payment?
No. We will not have any involvement unless we're successful. They don't have an agreement with Bosom West and the NTI.
Gotcha. Which will come later.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure on the Dogwood part, that we didn't need to appropriate money, that we weren't entering directly into the contract with the consultant.
We'll be on the side.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say something? Well, thank Tommy Jenkins for being enrolled in the broadband with the community. We got Jeff Lee back there. You may not know Jeff, but he's very instrumental part in the educational part for people like myself, coming to speak to us and moving things forward. But appreciate what you're doing and appreciate what Jeff has shared with us and moved things along. Thank you, Jeff. The broadband committee works hard and JF and his crew, but they've been valuable source of information. We'll keep monitoring.
All in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Make time to get you done. All right. Request for release of surety bond for Highlands Falls Country Club. Complaining for meeting the Development Director, Mr. Jack Morgan. Welcome, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for being here. On October 19th, we accepted a surety bond in the amount of $12,500 from Highlands Falls Country Club for their improvement permit on the golf course. 25 acres worth. We required at least $500 bond, three acres, so 12,500. They are finished. I want your money back there.
Finally.
Finally. Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Hickman, second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Jack.
Sorry it took so long.
That's okay.
All right. Item 11D was removed from the agenda. Item 11E, satisfaction of security instrument regarding Franklin Tubular Products. County Attorney Eric Riedner.
It's my understanding that this was a previous economic development incentive program that was complied with, and Tommy just left, but he emailed and confirmed that it should be satisfied. So it's, Franklin Tubular has requested that that deed of trust be marked as satisfied.
I'm good as Mr. Manager. I remember it. Remember it, Ron?
Mm-hmm.
Did you meet the staffing requirements?
Far as I know.
Satisfied.
That's what Mr. Jenkins reported.
Yeah. Okay. We get a motion to approve.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Beal, second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. Item 11F, request for funding from Kids Place, Commissioner Beal and/or Alicia Ash, Executive Directors.
Alicia will come forward and I was contacted by Alicia and we sat down to try to figure out what we can do. Alicia will get into the numbers. For full disclosure, Alicia will tell you that they were also recipient of the community funding pool, but that was before she knew that she was going to lose 67% of the funding. If you're not familiar with Kids Place, Mr. Shields has been on that board for three decades. And Kids Place serves a, serves a service like nobody else, nobody. And unfortunately, we have more kids now than ever. We don't know what it's related to. It goes, as Alicia will tell you, it's like this, but right now, it's certainly like this. And we have one of the finest facilities, not only in our area, but in this state, with the people in place to take care of these kids who a lot of have experienced a horrendous experience. And so Alicia is going to, you got in your packet, you will see what, and this is just an emergency request, one-time request, an emergency request. And Alicia, you have the form.
Well, thank you, Mr. Beal, and thank you, gentlemen, for your time this evening. Actually, Mr. Shields has been part of Kids Place longer than I have, and that's a long time, Mr. Shields. I think he's one of our founding members. Kids Place, what is Kids Place? It is a private nonprofit, nationally accredited children's advocacy center, and we work really hard to meet those standards to be accredited, and we're proud to be able to meet those standards. We serve children who have experienced trauma. That could be physical abuse, sexual abuse, sexual assault, severe neglect, witness to violence. For example, we've interviewed way too many children who have witnessed homicide. And I've been doing this work for 30 years almost, and I could tell you some really horrible stories about things that children in our community have been through. But that's, it's really heartbreaking, but that's not why I'm here. I could also tell you a bunch of stories about children who have had their lives turned around by the help that they've gotten through the professionals at Kids Place. And it's kind of like being a teacher. You don't always hear back from your students, you know, but occasionally, we hear back from kids who have really, they've gotten the treatment they needed and they are doing well. But tonight, I'm here to ask for your help for these little ones. These little ones don't, they can't vote. They don't have a These little ones don't, they can't vote, they don't have a voice. We serve children from birth to 18. And in our 30-year history at Kids Place, serving children and families, we have never come before this board and made this kind of request. So I'm getting to do something tonight that I have never done and really didn't anticipate or want to be having to do. We had gotten notice last fall, I guess, that we would be having a cut of about 30% to our base funding. Our base funding comes through the Victims of Crime Act money. That is not taxpayer money, it's money that comes through white-collar federal crimes that's paid into a pot nationally, and that money must be spent to serve victims of crime. That money has been dwindling over the last four to five years, so there's, the reserves of that fund have been used up. When we got our grant notification a few weeks ago, we were told that it was a 67% cut to funding, which is way higher than a 30% to 35% cut. Additionally, we had, for the past two years, we had gotten, I had written and gotten a competitive grant to be able to offer additional mental health, we provide evidence-based mental health services, and to expand our medical program, because as you know, medical services in Macon County are difficult to access. And without Kids Place, these children would have to go to Asheville to access this kind of service. And we actually have better equipment in Franklin and better providers in Franklin, and children can stay right here and get that specialized medical care. We have wonderful, a nurse practitioner, and most recently, a pediatrician who are joining us. But that, that leads to, you know, where we are tonight. So, but I'm not, as Ronnie said, I'm not here asking you for a long-term fix for this. We're working with our national partners to get a fix on the national level, a voca fix that should be voted on tomorrow. There's been widespread support on both sides of the aisle in Washington, but that's not a quick fix. That fund has been depleted, and so it's going to take a while to build those reserves back up. So, you know, the trickle-down to the local level, like Kids Place and my peers across the state and the children we serve, will probably be three to four years. We're also working on the state level to try to get some immediate fixes. At Kids Place, what it meant for us was that our base funding, these are two-year grants they award us, our base funding went from $315,372.28, it was cut to $109,352.83. As I said, a 60, right at 67% cut. The competitive grant that we had had that was cut was $171,756 over two years. So that's an additional cut. So what I did, the first thing was start pairing our budget down and creating what I've called our bare-bones budget, and I anticipate needing to raise $110,000 to meet that bare-bones budget. I think that Kids Place can raise safely $35,000 through some local foundations and just through our local donors. We've built a good donor base over the last 30 years, but we are in a small rural area, and it's been a hard year on families. So fundraising, we took a hit last year on fundraising, too. So I'm asking the county to consider giving us $75,000 to help us meet this bare-bones budget and help us continue to provide services for these children without having to cut mental health, medical, victims advocacy, without having to cut any of these basic services. We have this unique public-private partnership. I don't think that many, we do our jobs sort of quietly, and that's by design. A lot of people don't even know we exist, but we provide a lot of services for the county that you may not even be aware of. Sometimes the first call we get will be from, from a deputy, from somebody from the Special Victims Unit. We love working with them, they're great. They'll call and say, we just got a report that a five-year-old has been sexually abused. We're going out, we need to schedule a forensic interview, what kind of time can you be there today? What time can your interviewers meet us? We provide that interview. It costs us about $5,000 to train an interviewer and keep them trained. To provide one interview with the overhead and everything, if you had to contract for that service, it would be about $1,200 per interview. So far, in the first six months, from January through June, we have done 43 interviews. We do those at the request of Child Protective Services and law enforcement. We've done, let's see, 21 medical exams in the last six months. Those would cost you about $2,000 apiece if you had to go somewhere else to get those done. Therapy would cost about $120 an hour. We've, we have saved the county about $21,000 on that for children who don't have Medicaid or other insurance. So this is just the Reader's Digest, Bull Down version. You probably have questions. I talk fast and furious.
Just like a comment, having had the opportunity to work with Ms. Ash for all these years, you can go to your district attorney, you can go to Sheriff Holland, who's also on the, our board, and they will tell you when Kids Place has handled a problem and it goes to court, they're very happy. It's when Kids Place has not been involved in it, when the question mark comes up if it'll be prosecuted. And it's a, Kids Place, we've got a board director, but also, you've got another group of commissioners, the people that are on that, can you share that?
We work, we operate as a team. We call them our core team. Our core team is made up of representatives from the Sheriff's Department, from the Special Victims Unit, from the Franklin Police Department, from the Highlands Police Department, from the District Attorney's Office, from Child Protective Services, from mental health, from specialized medical, trained medical providers, our forensic interviewer, our victim advocate, and myself as administrator. And we meet once a month, and we review all the open cases of child abuse. It's like putting together a puzzle, because it really does take a village.
If we lost this piece within this community, the school number one would suffer, because they are a liaison to the kids, and this pandemic has created a hardship among families. You know, people are in hardship sometimes in mental health, people just don't act normal, and the kids are in the line to be abused and other people within the family. As a board member, it's rewarding to have this facility, but it's also the core team that's involved in it that makes it happen. And this is just a small amount of money here for the amount of work you do. And as a board member, I appreciate what you do, and I've told you that before, and the core team, made up of all those different departments, we're probably one of the few, we're nationally certified. We had to come in and work for the national board, they're certified, we're state certified. Also, we've got a sister county. Can you share with that, or?
We, I have a huge heart for kids, as does Mr. Shield and several of y'all, and so in neighboring Graham County, they have reached out to us several times for help. We don't see a lot of children from over there, but they have so few services over there that we may serve 10, 15 children a year from Graham County. But the cases are horrific, so I could not say no.
And we're ready to hire one of the vice positions, if you want to share that.
We have hired Dr. Jenny Brown on a temporary basis, and then she will transition. I'm working with my peers on other ways to bring down cost. And one way that we have always done well in western North Carolina is to collaborate. And we work, I'm working with my peers in Jackson County and Haywood County to pull together a medical collaborative. We have already filed our, it'll be a new nonprofit, we filed articles of incorporation and looking at getting the 501(c)(3) done, but we, by doing that, we will share human resources, we'll be sharing medical providers across county lines, and we will be sharing the funding of that, and that will bring that piece out of my budget. And that, that's not going to be a quick fix. Right now, one of the big things is trying to figure out how to do medical malpractice insurance, so these people can work across lines and our kids can still get that service at Kids Place. But it just makes sense, there's nothing like it in North Carolina.
You know, down the side, Old Eagle's right across from behind the police station, pre-pandemic, we had things rolling regarding another.
A new facility.
New facility.
Yeah, and then COVID.
Then COVID came along, we're having to live in a house that has served us well, but we still want to look out for an expansion to this, and we've had to put it on hold.
Well, we own the property, so we'll.
We do.
We'll get rolling, raising money for that again soon. Our numbers, we're transitioning to a new case-tracking thing, and that has inhibited my ability to pull a lot of numbers today on a short notice, but looking at January through June for 2020 and 2021, our numbers have doubled during that time period. And we've seen, following the state trend, we've seen a 30% increase in the number of child sex abuse cases.
It's a, it's a sad place to be within the community, that this is so necessary.
But there's hope there.
Yes, yes, and I think Kids Place is one of the shining stars that we have within the community.
Just one last thing, Mr. Chairman, when you deal with the mental health aspect of these children, those of us who are involved, this is the first time that I can remember, you probably learned more about Kids Place tonight than you ever wanted to know, and the numbers are shocking, and the numbers of kids we have in protective custody is But it's a needed service, it's, if you're really involved in this and see what we see on a regular basis, on a very regular basis, too regular, and to know that we're one of the few that has this service, we are only, in the far west, we're it. We're basically it. So tonight, I would hope this board would, in unison, support Kids Place, it's a little fault of their own, and after 30 years to come with this emergency request, Mr. Chairman, I think you're very valuable.
So I want to say thank you for what you do. You guys really are angels. From a business standpoint, I don't trust the government, okay? And I say that for several reasons. For instance, with the school system right now, they have set a couple unfunded mandates. We spent $7 million building two different expansions because they now tell us our class size has to be smaller than what it is, and I worry about, you know, the funding. I mean, who, are we really going to get funds next year and the year after? I mean, I hope and pray we do, I hope tomorrow we have excellent news. I guess what I wanted to ask is, is there a way maybe we could help fundraise? Could I help Kids Place fundraise?
Absolutely.
You know? Well, what I want to bring up is maybe we use some of our nonprofit funding pool. We have $75,000 set aside for stuff like this, let's use a large portion or a good portion of that towards this, and look, tell me how I can help the community. I know Reach, let's kind of team up with some other nonprofits and, you know, can we work together and kind of find a way that, we just sat through three months of budgeting, and like I, you know, I had a conversation on the phone today, it's, you know, breaks my heart to even hear this, I mean, it's terrible, and I know of certain circumstances that some of the same you know of, and, I mean, it really does tear at your heartstrings, but from a business standpoint, is there a way that, you know, I can help, maybe we don't, you know, fund the whole thing today, maybe we use, I don't know, $30,000 out of our nonprofit funding pool, just a thought, and maybe we work together and kind of see if we spread the word, and I didn't really know what Kids Place did until today, and I know there's a lot more like me, so, just a thought.
I would hate to be in your shoes, having to make the decision, especially if you pulled $30,000, who are you going to pull it away from?
Yeah, and what you do, you penalize those other nonprofits who are doing a wonderful thing, too, if you take it all out of the funding pool.
Exactly.
This is an emergency request.
Well, and here's where I'm at, so from what I understand, the town of Franklin, they've done away with their funding pool, and what it does is it entices every nonprofit to come before the board and beg for money, and it's hard because, I mean, you're a nonprofit. I want, if this was my money, it'd be a whole lot easier to hand it to you than, you know, the tax dollars, and it's, it's so hard, but I just wonder if there's a way I can help you, and we can give you enough funds to keep you going, maybe we spread the word within the community, and let's talk to some other, you know, large donors, is that?
We do have programs for people from the community, Ken don't know if we have a birthday.
We raise, you know.
A lot of bad money.
For a small town, we do, we have worked hard to build some local donors. I spoke at my church two weeks ago and got back to the office and had, the next day in the mail, had $2,000 from.
Fantastic.
You know, but that's not $110,000.
But men like you.
I just have a hard time.
I'm telling you, that's what they depend on, is that few hundred dollars that comes from the local people. We have, we do our birthday.
I have one little lady that sends us $2, $1 bills every year.
Me and Will.
And it matters.
We'll make you a question there, and this bill alluded to it in this emergency rate. This is money that will go immediately towards pulling this back on, back together with kids. Along with Kids Place, as a former school principal, what Kids Place means to our school system. By law, teachers and principals think we have to report child abuse. And one of the things that worried some of us, worried me, when the students were not in school, things were happening to them, that your school administration or your teachers wouldn't report it to them, and, but they weren't there, and so it just, then when things kind of break up a little bit, you start seeing it filter in there a little bit.
I anticipate this fall that our numbers are really, I fear our numbers are really going to go up.
And we appreciate your comments and people like you, hey, we want to make a donation and stuff like that.
Or introduce me to people.
Well, I mean, if we had a bank or a dinner and churches and you spread, you know, like I said, I've been here my whole life, I've heard of Kids Place a hundred times, I had no idea that they took care of abused, sexually abused, you know, children, and, you know, if you explained to me on the phone, is it Reach takes care of adults from 18 plus?
And I can't speak to their service, you know, it's totally different ages.
Right, I'm saying what I've learned, and today, you know, Kids Place is from birth to 18, and I had no idea, and that's, that's all I'm suggesting, is maybe we, instead of taking such a large sum initially, you know, just asking.
Thank you for your passion.
Thank you, Alicia, for what you do and for what you've done for most of your life, very worthy program. As a manager of that program, seeing that funding card is, you know, it being restored.
I thought it was an error. I emailed back and said.
There's a lot of errors going on in our government right now.
I was like, is this a typo?
But, you know, what do you do? And you come to us, and we're the, we're the caretakers of local taxpayer dollars, and I'm very prouled in my votes related to those taxpayer dollars. And this board, to our fault, we've, we've had some non-written policies about allocating funds to nonprofits, and it's been tossed around for years with no one taking responsibility, and we say, hey, we're going to grant $75,000 a year. We just did that in the budget, and then the next month, we do another $35,000, so we don't have any protocol that the full board can abide by, and it makes it tough on somebody like me that. And it makes it tough on somebody like me, the worthiness of your program, the benefit of your program. I mean, without this money, children are going to suffer. And as a manager of county taxpayer dollars, it puts, it puts a pain on me, just like you've dealt with a pain. How do I vote on this thing? And I'm confident that you will get your request, but I have to individually, how do I vote on this thing? Because every month, I'm the, I'm the lone, every 501(c)(3) that's come before this board, since I've sent here, is a worthy cause with a worthy mission statement. You're no different. Yours may be more worthy because of the clientele you're dealing with, but we have to look at the whole group. And I truly appreciate what you've done, but how do we fund that? If you're not going to get stable funding for three years, as you earlier mentioned, you're going to deal with this again. And if the program is that worthwhile, the citizenry of Macon County, it may need to be incorporated into a more permanent line item, you know, part of our annual budget. Because if, and I keep telling the, I tell women, we're setting precedent. Every time a nonprofit comes, we say, hey, we've already used our $75,000. We're going to grant another 10, 20, 75. We're continuing setting precedent, and I see the effects of that now. You know, until we have a definitive protocol on funding, this will be an issue. And every time I vote no on something, I get accused of, oh, it's, you know, you're pulling the baby out with the wash. You know, that's absolutely not. It's just that I was elected to, to manage taxpayer dollars.
And I appreciate that.
And, and it's a tough call for me because I've known you and I've known.
My job's tough, but y'all's job is tough, too.
No, no, yours is more worthy, I think, in the long run. Ours is dealing with dollars, yours is dealing with lives. And so I just had to share that. It's a tough call for me, Alicia.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you for what you're doing, though.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we advance the request made by Kids Place in the amount of $75,000 of money to be taken from fund balances. This is not a reoccurring expense.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bill, second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Is there, and Josh had a great idea. How much of that $75,000 is unused or not been allocated? If we go on to the.
We've not went through the process yet. We just, with the new budget, there's, there's $75,000 sitting there that, and the application process will start in February or in March.
I think so.
Do we have the authority to take that money and just say, hey, we're going, we'll skip this year's community funding pool?
If you do that, Mr. Chairman, what happens is you penalize those other nonprofits. The reason for the funding pool was, you know, every commissioner has their own things. But this is an emergency request, and I understand that. If we, if we delete the funding pool, we always have more applications for the funding pools that we can award the money.
We did last year. We did last year.
Yes, we did, we had two. And they were just disqualified because there's no money. So, so we always, so this is, we have a lot of good things in our county that people spend their time and energy, too. But none more important than taking care of some of these children. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I call a question.
I might have an opportunity to talk. No, I just, I just have a hard time. And I've made several phone calls. And one was just at the town of Franklin after a rumor of they've completely foregone with their, with their funding pool. And it's because we entice every nonprofit to come before us. And I hate to say beg, but we, we ask them to come. We have $75,000. Come, come ask for as much as you want until it runs out. It's, it's hard to sit here and just look somebody in the eye and say, you know, because I wish I could, I wish I could write the money out of, you know, out of my account. I wish you were willing to help. I mean, I want to help you after this meeting. I want to help you regardless. But I'm, I'm perfectly fine with using the $75,000 of the funding pool that's set aside for that and foregoing with the other nonprofits as well. And the money already allocated and has not been assigned.
All right, Lisa, I'm sorry you're getting into, you're getting into not necessarily a conversation about your needs and the Kids Place issue. But we're looking more at a, a standard that this board has gone through or is potentially setting. And do we become the emergency funding pool for all nonprofits? We tend to do that, yes. And maybe that's what we are, maybe that's kind of what we are here for. This morning, had a conversation with a friend of mine about this. Sitting to my left, as we were on the job site together, and we discussed it. And I told him I was riding the fence with this one for moral reasons. And then there's also the reasons about the kids and how you handle the situation in this moving forward. And are we opening the book for, if one of our local dental clinics is having an issue next month and then they come to us and then you feel obliged to, well, you gave it to Kids Place this time. So there's that whole question. And then I went home and I had a conversation with my spouse about it, who's a preschool teacher and leader of Methodist Church, Preschool in Highlands. The good hit me and the tear kind of showed up. So it sold me on my vote of my conscience of laying the good versus the financial deeds that I will secure. Any other comments?
Let me just say one thing before we finally. It was hard for me to grasp this total thing one time of what, if you didn't have Kids Place, if you didn't have these 501(c)(3)'s in Macon County, what it would cost Macon County, the taxpayers, if you didn't have these organizations. $75,000 being dropped in the bucket if you didn't have Kids Place. On the services that you'd have to provide to handle what you're having. And, and the same thing goes along with those other 501(c)(3). It would cost, I don't want to get into my, I would say it costs thousands of dollars a year to manage this if you had to, if you had to.
And we're bringing money into the local economy usually.
Right. But it's, it's those things are necessary.
I didn't want to be here standing before y'all, trust me.
You're great, lady. And you shouldn't be here. You shouldn't have to.
You have to be here, right? Though we respect your courage in doing what you do for Macon County. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Y'all are going to make this lady cry.
Thank you.
Thank you. And give me a call.
And again, my position was not about the needs. It was only strictly where the funds come from.
I understand, yeah, I understand. And I'm going to take you up on that.
You call me.
And yes, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. See you soon.
Thank you.
All right, Nana Hill Library Discussion, Commissioner Higdon. They had a meeting over there last night?
Had a meeting last night. Had a witness, Brent was over there. We didn't ride together. They wanted an update on where we stood with a proposed library community club building and a project in Nana Hill. So I went over to answer their questions. And, and all I could tell them more or less was that we had closed on the property, I think on July the 3rd, July the 4th. Gave them 30 days to evacuate all the, all the remains in that building that have passed on July the 4th. There's still a lot of junk in the, well, not a lot of junk, but there's still some, some stuff on that property. And last night, and I told them in the meeting, driving over last night, I didn't know if the library is going to be moving into that building or what we're going to do with that building. But I planned to come tonight and ask the board to authorize us to move forward by contracting with a local engineer to do a preliminary drawing of the building. And then I was informed a little while ago that we've not got a decision whether the library is going to move in the building or not. So that's going to affect our design and ultimate use of the building. So, you know, we've dragged this thing around, I think, 14 years before me and two years since I've been here. So it's time we put some periods behind our sentences. And is the library going to go to this building? We need, we need a decision. I know it's been stated on this board that they're not moving, but, you know, we need, I think, now that we have this building, the community's excited that we've moved this far with them. And I think we need to keep it going. There's funds are set aside for improvements and.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read into the record a letter from the Board of Trustees and from the Nana Hill Community Library. On behalf of the Macon County Library Board of Trustees, I'm requesting that the Board of Commissioners prioritize the building of a new Nana Hill Community Library. We feel strongly that the Nana Hill community would be best served if the library remains adjacent to the school. The best option appears to be rebuilding in the location occupied by our current library building. As you aware, the current library facility in Nana Hill is in very poor shape. As part of the assessments and recommendations for Macon County's master facility plan in December of 2019, most of the architects determined that the library facility has limited office space and does not allow for expansion and growth. And the building is not suitable for continued use and should be demolished. We fear that if a new library building is not made available soon, the existing building will deteriorate to the point it can no longer be safely used, which is near. Longstanding partnerships with Nana Hill Community Club and the school enable the library to provide effective and meaningful services to members of the community. Meetings, programs, food distribution, and congregant meals are all done collaboratively with the library and community club. The library works cooperatively with the school to support teachers and student needs, both in the school and at the library with books and other materials on a daily basis. We provide study space, literacy programs, Wi-Fi, and other technology access for the community also. We appreciate the efforts put forth by the Board of County Commissioners and the County Manager to secure a much-needed new home. For the Nana Hill Community Library, we look forward to working on plans that will benefit the people of Nana Hill community. So with that, that's the people of the community and the library trustees. Mr. Chairman, what I would request is to sort of compare apples to apples that, that, County Manager and I have had this discussion, we can get a local engineer, architect to go over and look at it with no cost to this board and no cost to the county, to see what, and put a budget together of what it would cost to demolish those buildings that's there and construct a new 3,200 square foot building. So I think that would be probably around the same price and cost to renovate the, the other one that this board bought. So I'd ask permission to pursue that. And I think if we get numbers put together, it will give this board a better idea on what we can do to spend the money.
Other comments?
If we stick to the capital improvement plan, the Nana Hill Library ranks number seven or eight on building and unit development. So we just throw out the $150,000, $200,000 capital improvement plan to wheel.
No, what we don't throw out is to provide services to that school. If it's four miles away, it's not going to work.
To that school. The school has their own library in the building.
Yeah, but they do a lot for that school. The library does, a whole lot. You know that.
And I was meeting last night and I've been to a lot of meetings. There is a division within that community, though, as a group wants to keep the library there. The group don't, and I think the majority is.
But these are the people that are involved right here.
That's the library board.
They stood before this board. The community building, the Board of Trustees, the people from Nana Hill stood here and asked this board to please pursue putting the library at the school where it is now.
And we wore this thing out, Ronnie, for two years. I said, why, you've never got anything done in 10 years and you're on the library board.
Well, this isn't, well, this is an opportunity. If we can afford a $4 million loss at a, at a National Gardenary Week, surely we'll pull this off.
There you go.
How did the, I thought we had a letter from the school, our school board rep in that district not warning that the school.
She has sent recanted that loss.
How does the school board feel about having the library on that campus?
My last report from, from Mr. Baldwin was there on Mount Hill's support.
I didn't say that, Ronnie.
I tell you, when we, when we met, we haven't discussed the library. I would be happy to follow up with you next meeting. And I spoke with Karen Wallace this afternoon, and she said she would be willing to come to the August board meeting and discuss this further because it was like she was wanting an update on her report. And I said, just what you said, we don't, we don't know where we are right now. We have a, you know, we haven't made a decision one way or another as far as the board's concerned, so.
We do know what the people that's involved with the library and the community.
If you go to those community meetings, Ronnie, you're right over there next month with them. We'll sit there and talk to them.
But are those people involved?
Pardon?
Are they involved?
Their taxpayers.
The community, the chairman, the president of the community and the vice chairman was here. And we heard what they said.
All right. And I think.
But I think we should pursue, Mr. Chairman, is try to get some, come down to money, a whole lot of.
Sure. We voted on this in a three to two decision, but to pursue the building that we've just purchased.
Sure. I agree with that, and I'm still in favor of that, Commissioner Higdon. With 100%, I think the community needed that building as a place to meet. And I didn't think necessarily the school was the best place for the community organization to be.
Nor do the, nor does the majority of the community over there.
Yeah, so I'm completely fine and still stand behind my decisions with that. Personally, I think I would like to know how the school board feels about that. I think that's more their decision than ours of how they feel about a library being there. We've kind of looked at it from there.
And it was mentioned last night.
It doesn't, yeah.
The library board has used, you know, we're here to help the school.
I don't think it's the library's decision. I don't think it's necessarily 100% our decision. I think the school board, be on school ground, they ought to have some type of, I don't think we ever received.
And the school has a library.
Information from them about how they feel about it.
We can wear this thing out for the next 10 years.
That's for, sure.
And that's a little bit down.
That's for sure.
So can we pursue putting some numbers together for a new library, Mr. Chairman, so we had known?
You and Jack put something together. You and Jack put something together six months ago.
That ain't no good now.
We should maybe ask the school board.
That's what I'm thinking, but I think everybody on here has got a different opinion. It's how we come to consensus.
We have to make the decision.
Where we go, so.
We provide the building for the Nana Hill Lab, for the Pontana Regional Library. That's part of our contractual agreement with them. And if we provide them this building, they don't want to move in it, make a great community club.
I don't think it'll do that either way.
It will.
And that's why I support that.
Great potential. And the community is excited about it.
I agree. Because it's a place to meet.
What direction do we take? I mean, these folks, I've got to talk to some of them tonight. They're excited about improvements.
Sure.
I think you still go back and get some feedback from the school board to see if it's, I understand what you're saying. It's, it's hard to go forward if your school board is not with you.
Well, the school board wasn't with you, okay? And they sent that letter, you know, twisted her arm or whatever.
One member, one member, and she has sent, she has sent recanted her, her objection.
I mean, they don't want to get into political mess, you know?
It's not their decision anyway. It's our decision.
And I'd like to have their support if we can move on. That's, in terms of building process and anything regarding the school, whether it's middle school or high school, their support or resolution, or what it may be, to me is very, very important. Because if, if we move forward on something, if they're against it, I just get mixed up. I, I think it's somewhere along the line, you're going to have to, if they agree that this is a good idea or they need a this on that campus, you're going to have to go up, Mr. Bill was talking about. You're going to have to look at something and put some facts and figures together and say, well, what's this going to cost us if the school board chooses or requests for us to move in that manner? I'd hate to be the people over there. I, I don't know who's who. I just have heard, heard these people, people who are for it and who are against it. And sometimes they're the same people. And, you know, so I don't know how to get to the end result of a library. I think we're trying to satisfy both sides. We have the, we bought that site up there. And I think a meeting I was in with the, they were adamant against moving in there. It was, it was not part of their, what they wanted to do. Then you have people coming here. I don't, I don't know how to find the true answer. But I do feel like if the school board is an advocate for a library on the campus there, that carries some weight within the community. Somewhere along the line, if you don't, they won't even have a library.
They're close to not having one now.
That's right.
I think they'll call it.
But I think they need to have one. Trying to get to the point where we can find something that satisfies all of them.
You're going to satisfy them all. I told them that. I said that at that meeting last night and told them that. I have no problem with it.
Yeah, I've heard you say it, and I've heard Mr. Bill say it, and that's why I say that, why is this so hard? The reason it's so hard to me to understand is because you've got a small community that's divided, but they're the same people. I can't, I can't get it.
They'll come together. We do, I don't want to see that building sit there for the next two or three years while we're trying to make up our mind because it needs some cleaning, it needs to be, some of that needs to be cleaned out, and I, is that our, I guess we vote it as is.
I'm a hundred percent ready to move forward, we're getting that thing cleaned up and start taking it in the right direction. I think that can happen before we decide if the library...
What was the budget, nine-hundred thousand to fix that building?
Y'all haven't appropriated any money for Nantahala.
We didn't.
But then what, what Jack said...
Oh, I don't know that.
No, that was counting. There's a lot of moving parts still with that. I was factoring in a three-hundred-thousand-dollar connection to fiber broadband.
No, that was six-hundred.
We've since, we've since been working with Boston West and exploring some options, and we think if some things come together, there could potentially be some wireless options for that building that we did not think were not possible when this conversation first started, but those are still developing and in process.
We don't know.
And Frontier is close too, right, Brent?
Less than a mile from the Aqualan Baptist Church, right there, Mike, Daniel Lox Place down in the...
I live right there at church.
Less than a mile.
It's right to the...
Is they at fiber there?
Yes, sir. And it's, I talked to Daniel last night, and he said that he had fiber at his house with twenty Megs, whatever that means.
And I think it's sort of, looking at Boston West and some of the plans, Kate's not in here, Lauren, she's not here, but there's some movement of getting that field view for that whole area there through Boston West. There's a, and the player that we are, I think the emergency medical management system is going to be a player there, that we're going to branch out from there. But it goes back to what you're calling about here, what are you going to do with the eyesore and the thing that's on the campus now? What do you do with that? And if you're saying that needs to be retrieved and moved out of there, then I think we need to get it out of there. I don't know where to go with it, though.
Does it go?
We'll take that to his hat.
I don't know, I don't know what to do.
Those are smart start buildings that was donated from this county to them.
Could we, at least tonight, agree to allocate some minimal funds or resources just to get the building presentable?
We can get, yes. We, what we did, we closed on that, I think it was June fourth. I think July fourth was the month. We gave them an extra month in the contract to get all their things out of there. I emailed Kim Bateman, former property owner, on Monday, yesterday, and asked her when I could meet her, when we could arrange a time since the month was up to get the key and to turn it, turn it over to the county. I have not heard from her as of the meeting time today. I'll have to reach out to her again. I think once that's done, we can certainly, we have a great maintenance staff that we can get it on that immediately, get that, everything that's left in there, get it out of there, get it, get the floors cleaned, get everything cleaned up around there, and certainly get it in presentable condition. Again, I spoke with Karen Wallace also this afternoon, who really couldn't be here today. She had another meeting, but she did say that she would be talking with Ronnie, her liaison, and could be at the August meeting.
We do need some money, though. I mean, yes, we have maintenance staff, but they didn't build this in their budget to take care of this building and getting it presentable.
Well, right now, well, and I'm thinking, what I'm thinking is just hauling trash off, doing some weed eating, some mowing, cleaning up in there, you know, cleaning off the, cleaning dust off, which, I mean, really...
There's nothing about the building that passes code, nothing. It has no heat, the electrical won't pass, so it's going to be a complete redo.
It'll be good. They need a new building, don't they?
Well, I'd miss bulldozers, that'll have you down, the deal more.
But it's just what we're, what we're talking about, I think, in cleaning it up, I think if we, when we start talking about the next steps in terms of like what you're saying, Commissioner Bill, with the renovations, we need to know before we authorize to move forward with an architect, are we renovating for a community building or are we renovating for a community and a library? Because that's, that's two different discussions with that architect on the direction we're going to tell that architect to hit. So until, I think until we have a firm decision on that, know what, as far as architectural, structural, code compliance, all that's going to determine, be, going to be determined largely by what goes in it. So again, whatever we need to do to get to that point.
Well, I think we just need, do we need to allocate some, are you looking for a motion to allocate some funds, or can you work it in?
I, I think we can, I think we can get it presentable without allocating funds. If we, if I talk to the maintenance director and come to find out, yeah, hey, we need twenty-five-hundred, three-thousand dollars, something like that, then we'll go ahead, I mean, then we can do that, we'll go ahead and spend it out of their budget, and we'll reimburse maintenance for whatever they've spent that wasn't accounted for in their budget. But I'd hate to throw a blanket at it if we can do it for nothing, if it's just man-hours going over there and filling up a dump truck and running it to the landfill and doing some weed eating and cleaning up and sweeping the floors, I mean...
There's a couple piles of gravel and an old truck and some rocks and stuff that's going to...
Yeah, we will, we will have to pay landfill fees. I mean, even though it's our landfill, it's enterprise fund, so...
We need to approve...
We take stuff to the landfill, that's not going to be free.
Could we approve five-thousand dollars if you need it as a fund, to clean up fund?
Absolutely, yeah. Y'all can certainly do that, and whatever, we'll keep the record of it.
From contingency.
Yeah, I don't want to wait another month, come in here and say, oh, we've got to have thirty-five-hundred dollars to do this, when we've got to do it anyway. So I'll make a motion to appropriate five-thousand dollars to be used at Derek's discretion to make improvements to the Nantahala property.
From contingency.
From contingency.
We have a motion by Commissioner Higdon. Second, second by Commissioner Young. Any comments, questions?
I don't, I guess, I don't have a problem with that. I think that probably is going to have to have some attention. The two of you talked about the electrical, it's going to cost us more than five-thousand dollars to bring it up to par.
Sure.
We're just cleaning it up.
Just cleaning it up, yeah.
And getting it upgraded. I guess what's still in my mind, okay, we've done that, we've put the curtains in it, made it look nice, but where do we go there regarding the library? Is it still a part of the community, or what, what's the next step? I don't mind voting on five-thousand dollars. I don't know what the next step is.
Next step's to hire an architect and give the library a reasonable thirty days to make up their mind if they will play...
They made up their mind. I just read you the letter.
Thank you for helping make their mind.
They wrote the letter.
Let's move forward with...
I'll bring some numbers in for the new library, and it won't cost nothing. So we'll get those numbers.
We've been through this, Ronnie. You beat this thing down. You were on the library board for, what, ten years before I came along?
Probably.
So I would just like the school board's opinion to our two liaisons here, just get their thoughts on how they feel about the safety aspect or the everyday citizens coming to the school property for the library. I would like to know their opinion on that. But I, I'm not, I'm still sold the library needs to be where we just decided to move it to a few months ago, and I think that's a great place, but, yeah. We'll just see where they come up with it.
Still, it needs to be cleaned up.
Sure, I agree. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, aye. Board of one, Mr. Jack, if you'd like to...
But I appreciate what you do.
Mr. Attorney, are there any legal repercussions for putting a public library on a public school ground?
I'm not aware of any. I looked into, there was...
They're all over the state on public schools.
When I first, when I first, first week I got involved, Derek said, hey, this issue may come up tonight, and it has to do with sexual predator laws and ability to access a public library, and look that up. And so I looked into that, and you can designate certain times on that issue, but that's the only one that I've, I've looked at thus far that I'm aware, unless you can remember anything else that has come up.
Thank you. Hundred and eleven H, Electoral District, Secretary of Public Affairs. Go ahead.
I get to bring up all the good stuff today, boys. I like that. I'm going to pass out a packet to each one of you commissioners, those of you who want to take it. Just, we'll ring this up just as a topic of discussion. And I'll read this little brief introduction here, it says, "Since 1978, Macon County's citizens have been represented by five, by a five-member Board of Commissioners elected from three districts, District one, two, and three. System's worked well most times, but it's restrictive to districts one and three because we're single-member districts, and potential candidates that want to seek office in District one and three can only file for election every four years. While District two is represented by three commissioners with staggered terms, so potential candidates in District two can file for office every two years. In my humble opinion, there's a little inequality, and inequality is a big term we're hearing all the time, now equality, equality, but, you know, I, I'd like for this board to open up a good, healthy discussion about ways that we can afford the total county, that option of seeking office every two years to Macon County Board of Commissioners. And there's ways that can be done. We could leave, we could do some redistricting on the map, create three districts, and then have two at-large staggered seats so that anyone in county can run. Right now, we're a, called a district at large, there's, there is a county election method, and Macon County Commissioners are nominated by district, elected at large. We're a D A L, the district at large. Now, there are other election methods, such as pure at large, where all five commissioners would be elected at large from the county. I don't like that. Pure district, where we're elected from a district, but if the objective is to allow potential candidates to file for office every two years, the best method will be to retain the current three districts with one member each and have two at-large with staggered terms. This would require redistricting the county into three equal districts and producing them out. And so I did a little packet for attorney, legal counsel, and for each board member, and for any interested person here that wants it, just to pass these out, and I just want, I'm requesting that this board acknowledge, receive, and agree to have a healthy debate about this with no time limits involved. Can't wait fourteen years.
Hi, Commissioner Higdon, I appreciate it, and I don't think you were on the board. I brought this up prior, whenever I first became a member, because I was a little upset of District one and the district that I represent. Because my district is well over, well over fifty percent of the Macon County tax base, but very minimal when it comes to population, so not enough population out there to have a county commissioner on the hall. So it's, it's, I understand and I appreciate the fact that, of where you're going with that, and I understand it's a disproportionate, and I a hundred percent agree with you. I don't think it's fair that our district's only run once every four years, District two can run once every two years, but what I would be wholeheartedly against representing my district is, is doing anything that might enlarge District one. If anything, I want to shrink it because I think that Highlands always, somebody needs to have the heartbeat of that town and that community because it's, it's the economic lifeblood of this county right now. May change, but right now it is from a tax base perspective, so I wouldn't want to say anything that might enlarge District one to where somebody from Highlands might not, which is very possible now, might not be sitting on this board.
And the attorney can certainly look into it, but there's state law that mandates, it's mandated on population.
Sure.
That's how, that's how it's done, that's the reason District, the way it is now, that's the reason that District two has by vast the population, that's the reason they have three commissioners. Is that right or wrong? I'm not, I don't know for sure.
That's absolutely correct.
But that's, that's state statute. You have to change statutes.
You know, but it, it's just, you know, if a certain district, you can run for office every two years, I know people who would like to be on this board or would like to seek candidacy for this board, and four years is a long time to wait.
Disagree, it's a hard situation, but I'm happy to discuss it.
Yeah, let's do it. This, this is, now, this is old information. This is not something I got off of.
I think you need to talk to our representatives.
I see it's increased numbers. It's hard enough for five.
Pardon?
I'd like to see it's increased numbers, hard enough to five. I would have liked to count to four.
Well, and I even put it in there when we went from three to five back in 1978.
As our population increases, these, I think when we see the new twenty-twenty census come out, Mr. Chairman, the numbers, it may change some, but it ain't going to change a whole lot. We're going to have to talk to our state representatives about the statutes, too.
So just, y'all got to chuckle at this, so...
Thank you.
I was having a conversation not too long ago with a member of Jacksonville Ward Commissioners out there, a town and county all in one. There's nineteen members on that board. Gosh, I can't count that, huh? I'm running out of fingers and toes to get something passed.
Yeah, and those references to those candidates, you may not be accurate.
Well, yeah, I always thought the numbers, and that's why I commented on that. Some of them have seven, some nine.
Yeah, and it's up to us now whether we have to go...
Eleven.
In seventy-eight, they did a resolution and required a referendum. If we can have a healthy discussion, I will make sure that we do have a discussion on this, whether we have to do it in, I think we need to do it in public, and I'd like to even forecast right now to put it on next month's agenda.
How does that work? Because... How does an even number work?
The chairman, they ruled that their chairman, when I was, they had split votes, and the chairman...
So it's like...
Sort of like the town, the mayor of Highlands, the mayor.
Yeah, we can make it as simple or as complicated as we want.
Yeah, I'll find it, Scott. We'll put it on next month.
It's worked very well.
Give us thirty a month to think about it. All right. Consent agenda, and like I say, it's a very big one this month.
Anything on there that we need to discuss?
Nope, that's why it's on consent.
Based on Lori, the fact that it's all of recommendation, motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
My Commissioner Higdon. You're gifted. I'll second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was all aye. Just making sure. We have two appointments for the library board.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, as liaison, I would support the members. We have Mr. Lovell, who's agreed to serve another term, representing Highlands, Mr. Bill Trotter, and they're from Highlands. So just two, they have a very active library, of course, in Highlands, and they're very active members, so I would make the motion that we approve.
Reappoint Mr. Lovell and Mr. Trotter. We have a motion by Commissioner Bill. Second by Commissioner Shields, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. I do understand we have reason for a closed session. State of purpose, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, pursuant to one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven eight five to consult with an attorney about possible property acquisition and receive advice from the county, or from the county attorney.
Are you expecting any action?
No.
We want you to come out tonight, so no, sir.
Can I ask a question for clarification?
Sure.
As a liaison to the Board of Education, if I'd asked Dr. Baldwin, the Board of Education position on the Nantahala library on the campus of Nantahala School, did I hear y'all say that one?
I was just interested in their opinion.
I think, I think that's, that's paramount.
Is anybody in the copy of my brilliant opinions? Take that from Starby, completely.
Thank you. All right, can I get a motion to go into closed session? Mr. Chairman, my Commissioner Bill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young, all in favor.